Good evening, everyone. Tonight is June 28, 2023 at 6:01 PM. And I would like to call to order the Columbus City Council meeting. Our first call to order will be the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, just as for all.
Our next item will be the consent agenda. Would anyone like to make a motion to approve? And is there a second?
So this is Janet. I'll move to approve consent agenda items three through six. I do have a question on the minutes, sorry, as I always do. So we can take that up on discussion if you want.
All right. Is there a second?
This is Sue. I'll second.
And the discussion is?
On page seven of nine where there was discussion about the Brown Beagle project. Right at the top of the page, it says Haglund asked how the city will permit different businesses in this proposal. Griffith said individual businesses will not receive their own CUPs but only PUDs. They're not getting a PUD. I think what the... I went back and looked at the video and they're getting a zoning compliance certificate. So I think that's just an error. I think so if we can make that one correction, then I think the minutes would be okay.
Yeah, I think it's the CUP is for the PUD. And then you're right, we're not getting individual minutes out. And it was that special permit that Bill was going to write into the Baltimore agreement.
Yeah, exactly. So that's the only change I had.
So we have a motion and a slight correction?
Yeah, so I mean, I would, I can amend my motion to approve consent agendas three through six with the edit that I just introduced to the minutes.
And a second?
Yep, this is Sue. I'll second.
And any other questions? Anyone? I'll call the vote.
Ron, aye.
Sue, aye. Janet, aye.
Rob, aye.
And Jessie, aye. Onto letter C, Public Open Forum. Is there anyone in the room? It's kind of an empty room.
Come on, Angels, don't you have something you want to say?
Happy 4th of July. How's that?
That's great.
All right. Or...
We evidently in our neighborhood have a problem with people thinking that they're up for grabs. They've been stealing them. I don't know why. What did Jim say?
Two so far, I think.
Two or three? We're going to start concreting them in.
So if they're sitting behind your garage, we'll find them. Or is there anyone online who would like to speak at Public Open Forum? Hearing none, we'll move on. A Planning Commission Report Number Eight, Liaison Janet Haglund. Janet?
All right, let me get my notes out here. So this is my last, I believe, report as the liaison to the Planning Commission. This is summarizing their discussions and actions on the June 21, 2023 meeting. They had a public hearing to discuss the application for a conditional use permit amendment by Construction Technologies Incorporated at 13305 Humber Street Northeast. The amendment is been submitted to add an additional garage condo building with 15 more units and a little over 15,000 square feet of space south of building I and K. The building will have the same color and layout. Joe Basie was there to give a summary of the project and said that he expects the majority of the units to be sold to current owners. There was no public testimony at the hearing. The Planning Commission recommended unanimously that the council approve the CUP amendment and the CIC plat for the Construction Technology Incorporated application. And we have the information in our packet on page one through 18.
Does anyone have any questions or discussions? Or Elizabeth?
Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers, I just have one question for Joe. Joe, we were looking at the address for the entire complex. And can you tell me for the entire complex, are you using the address 13405 Lake Drive? Because I know, I know they're individual units, but is that the main address that the entire complex is going to use?
Yes, so if you remember when, when I started adding on these additional parcels, and since the gate was really at the 13405, you and I had talked and said that we would just use that for everything. I had used the 13305 just so if anybody did a search with that, it would show that piece of property. And that's why I use that on the, on the application for the expansion here is because technically that where we're adding the building is on what used to be 13305 Humber Street.
Thank you. So for...
Does that make sense?
It does.
Okay.
So for clarification, the conditional use permit is going to, so looking at the agenda packet, it indicates that while the improvement is going to be happening on the parcel that is off of Humber Street, the actual conditional use permit will be issued to 13405 Lake Drive because it's one development. The garages are in sequential order, so it's, and I think it's one through 193 or something like that now. So, so there is no repeat number. So if you, if you use the 13405 unit, whatever it is, you know, you mean it will get to the right place. Whereas I think the Humber Street is just for an entrance more so than an address.
Yes.
So then I, that makes me have a question on number three on the findings of fact. It says the proposed development is located at 13345 Lake Drive.
Yeah, that is incorrect. I don't, that address doesn't exist at all.
Okay.
And it should in fact say 13405.
Okay, thank you.
Um, this is Janet. I do have a question for Elizabeth. I know that maybe a year and a half or so ago, we were having some complaints from the neighbors on Humber Street with noise, mostly noise complaints. I'm wondering, I haven't heard anything from them. I mean, they usually looped me in when they weren't happy about things. And I know Joe did a really nice job of trying to address their concerns. Has there been any recent issues with noise problems or traffic problems?
There has no recent complaints. And I do know that during the public hearing, one of those neighbors were here. And I did ask them if they had questions and they just wanted to know where the addition was going. I gave them the enclosure and they were happy with that. And I don't even think they stayed for the rest of the meeting. So Joe, I don't know if they asked you questions, but they didn't have any further questions for me.
No, I have not heard anything from, from anybody in quite a while. So it's been kind of nice.
Okay, good.
Would you like to make the motion?
Sure. So I would move to approve Construction Technology Incorporated Conditional Use Permit Amendment, PC 23-105 at 13405 Lake Drive, expanding the use to include the addition of one additional garage condo building in CIC number 320, based on the findings of fact, one through 13, with the correction to number, was it three?
It was, yep. I think it was number three.
Number three, address correcting the address and subject to conditions one through 22.
Is there a second?
This is Sue. I'll second.
Any other questions or discussion? I'll call the vote.
Ron, aye.
Sue, aye.
Janet, aye.
Rob, aye.
And Jessie, aye.
Thank you.
There we go. Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
All right, Janet. Lions Club.
Were they going to come? I didn't know anything.
Unless, I don't know. I mean, I assume somebody maybe would have asked them to. Is there anybody here from the Forest Lake Lions for this application?
No.
Don't hear anybody. Maybe we should, maybe we should push it off till we can get somebody here to talk about it. This is for, this is for them to hold a meet raffle at the Fall Fest, so it's...
Not critical.
We got a little time, yeah.
We got time. So I would be okay. And then I just don't, I don't, maybe they didn't know that they should have somebody here.
Oh, okay.
Well, or is there anything special about it? We could just do it and be done with it? It's just a meet raffle.
Yes. Is there anything out of the ordinary for charitable gambling?
Mr. Mayor and Council, this is Bill Griffith. I don't think there's any reason you can't act on it tonight unless you have questions. But otherwise, if you're comfortable with it, I don't think there's any reason to delay the vote tonight.
I do have one question, Elizabeth. I don't know that they know for sure where it's going to be. So my question is, since this is a premise permit, right? Does it matter if it's maybe in the community center, maybe in the parking lot? As long as it's on city property, it's fine? Okay.
Yep. And on A1, our city attorney drafted a resolution. All gambling licenses have to be approved through a resolution for premise permits.
And it identified the location as 16319 Kettle River Boulevard.
If they wander across the street to the park, is that a problem?
That, that's the address. Where, where, we are the address. The only different address is the Public Works Building.
Okay. I think the, yeah, I just don't think that they have nailed down where exactly they're going to be. That's, I think that's still an unknown.
Well, I say let's approve it and then staff can...
Fine with me.
Decide where they want to. So what is the number of the resolution?
Today would be 2308.
All move to approve Resolution 2308 authorizing the Lions Club of Forest Lake to conduct the sale of tipboard tickets at the premise located at 16319 Kettle River Boulevard. Is there a second?
It's Rob. I'll second.
Any other questions or discussions? So this says tipboard, but it really is the meet raffle, right?
Yeah, I think it's just the mechanism that they use to sell tickets.
And the application, that's what it says. It's a tipboard.
Yeah.
I was told it was a big wheel, so I don't know. Maybe that's what a tipboard is, a big wheel. They apparently spin this wheel and you get a ticket. And if, if your number lands on there and you have that ticket, then you get to bid.
You get the meat.
Yeah.
In this case, it'll be you get the meat gift certificate because we're not going to have people carrying it around.
You take your certificate to the...
Yeah.
They don't have it in the back of their truck or nothing.
No, we told them that. We didn't think that was a good idea.
All right. Anybody else? I'll call the vote.
Ron, aye.
Sue, aye. Janet, aye.
Rob, aye.
And Jessie, aye. Ah, quickly onto letter D, number 10, engineer report. But we have no engineer, correct?
No engineers in this evening.
You know what? I didn't finish my Planning Commission report.
Whoops, I'm sorry.
Can we go back to that?
Yep.
So the only other thing I wanted to bring up is that there was a lot of discussion about pools, pool fences, pool...
Oh, yeah, there sure was.
And, and I'm thinking if any of you have strong feelings about it, it would really help guide their decision making at their next meeting. So the, the issues that they came up against was how to define a pool. So we have pools that are in-ground, pools that are above-ground, pools that have decks built around them, pools that are supposed to be above-ground but are dug into the ground. So I think that one of the things that they thought was important was to come up with definitions. And then, you know, I think the original simple question was should the fence around it be four feet or five feet? But then that morphed into a longer discussion about, well, what happens if it's got a deck around it? Where is the fence? How tall does the fence have to be? Where do you measure the fence from? Is it from the water level or from the ground level or from wherever the pool is sitting? If you have a, if you have a pool that's above-ground, is the four feet or whatever, 36 inches or 52 inches or whatever, then the height of the walls, is that part of the fence? And do we then require the difference to be made up? Should the fence height be consistent with the wall of an above-ground pool? Those are all things that they, they were really being thoughtful about their discussion, but they were really kind of struggling with. So I think that, again, I'm, I'm thinking that if we have any strong feelings one way or the other, that would help guide their discussion. And if you don't, that's fine too. But whoever's up next to do this can bring it back at that meeting. Oh, Sue is. Lucky you. The only other thing that came up was the latch. I think they, they felt pretty strongly that they wanted to have an automatic closing. And I'm not wild about that idea just because I think it doesn't really add that much protection and it's a big pain in the rear for anybody who's trying to carry stuff to and from the... I mean, my, my, I would weigh in on that and say, I don't, I mean, you can recommend it, but I don't know that we should require it. But that's my two cents.
It's not required today.
Yeah, I think they want it...
In today's ordinance, it's not required.
Yeah, and I think they're leaning towards wanting to require it. So up for discussion.
I got an opinion.
What's your opinion?
My opinion is if you've got an above-ground pool and you've got a ladder in it.
Okay.
You've got an above-ground pool and you've got a ladder in it and you take the ladder out, that's all I require in my mind. And I think if you've got a deck, even if it's two feet or three feet walking up to it, it has to be gated. But other than that, I think a fence on a, on an above-ground pool in our community with rural settings and that is just a waste of money for the public out there. And I'm not really in favor of that. I'll just be real frank on that. As far as in the ground, it's kind of common sense. If it's a foot above, it's got to be, something's got to be 48 inches or the pool siding could be 48 or something's got to be if it's in the ground. So that's my opinion.
So your, your opinion is four feet, not five feet?
Well, what, for the...
For the fence or the side?
No, I'm talking about the side of the pool. The actual pool height could be, but if the pool is three feet, now you're in a different ballpark, I think. I don't...
I think the current, correct me if I'm wrong, I think the current ordinance requires a five-foot fence.
It does. A fence.
A fence.
It says specifically fence. It doesn't say wall of pool or railing or decking. It specifically says fence.
And non-climable. And I think that...
Non-climable, yes.
And I think the, one of the questions is, well, if you require a five-foot fence around an in-ground pool, why wouldn't you require five feet around an above-ground pool? So I, I don't know the answer to that, but that's, I think, what they're kind of grappling with.
Well, I think that people got, it's not an expensive pool. The pool will go out before the fence if you build the fence. And I just think it's a cost that isn't, I don't think the homeowner should have to. If she pulls, or he or she pulls out the ladder to get in, to me, that's, she's doing what she's supposed to do. Otherwise, why wouldn't they sell these pools with five-foot fences around them?
So you would not recommend the fence that gets snapped on top of it to...
Not really, not if it's 48 inches up. I just, I don't think a little child's going to fall in that.
Yes, this is Rob. And personally having a pool, 48 to 52 inches, I think, across the cities is pretty much unified. I was in the pool last night and my dog's a lab. She's a hunting dog. She can jump pretty high and she, you know? But I do have a fence. It's not on there right now because it doesn't have to be. But I don't think that fence from the edge of the water to the top, and this is a factory doughboy fence, it's not five foot. So at that point, does that become legal non-conforming? Or how does that all work if it was installed previous to that ordinance going into effect about the five-foot fence?
Yeah, the, the five-foot fence, you know, it sits today, you know what I mean, is in, in here, but I'm not sure when your pool went in or what the requirements were at that time. But, you know, today, if you put in a pool, it specifically says five-foot fence, whether it's above-ground or in-ground pool. It just says, if you're putting a pool in and you don't have, you know, and, and that was my question. You know, it says fence, right? But is the side of the pool considered almost like a fence because it's, you know, non-climable? Then you put the railing on. So I think that's why we had different pictures as to what, does a fence have to be a fence or is it a barrier? Because some of them had decks around it. And you're not going to put a deck and a fence and, you know what I mean? That just seems a lot of redundancy. So I think, I think it's a good discussion for me and for Eleanor. We just want it clarified because I think everybody agreed that an in-ground pool either needed a fence or it needed a pool cover. And again, whether it's four foot or five foot, that's, I don't think, I think that was still talked about. But when we got to the above-ground pool, there's lots of different scenarios in the above-ground pool. And then the chairperson said, well, I had an in-ground pool and I dug it, I dug it in the ground. And I thought, okay, never thought about that one, but what, what do you do with that?
I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, I would say if they dug it into the ground and it's less than four feet from grade to the edge of that top rail, that they should have to have a fence around it or the 48 to 52. But I haven't seen where a doughboy or an intex style above-ground pool is dug down into the ground because the sidewall's steel and it'll, it'll rust over time from the chlorine and...
I could see water getting down in between there. When it rains, I just, I don't, I had one of those things too when I lived on Kettle River and I was glad to get rid of it, but it's only because...
They're not cheap.
It's chemicals, but now they go to saltwater. But I just think it's, if it's in the ordinance that they have, even on above-ground, a five-foot fence, I think it should be taken out, in my opinion. It's just redundant. It's just, what are we trying to do with these people? I mean, a pool doesn't cost $100,000 like an in-ground one might. And that one, I think you have to worry about. But above-ground...
At a three-foot level or a four-foot level, Ron?
Well, I, I don't know. Do they make three footers?
If it was dug in, maybe? I'm not sure.
I think I heard them say there was a three-foot model out there. I don't know how popular it is, but...
I would just, maybe we could give them the option that, you know, nothing less than four foot from grade at the, at the highest point.
Well, you know, it's funny you say that because then one of them little waiter pools, is that too deep? I mean, I...
Well, doesn't it say that the pool has to be at least so many feet deep before you have to put a fence around it?
Or so many gallons.
Like the little, yeah. The waiting pool.
It's over 5,000 gallons. It has to be over 5,000 gallons before you need a fence.
Oh, okay.
Because, you know, the kiddie pool, I don't even know how many gallons put in a kiddie pool. But yeah, like you were saying, you wouldn't put a fence for that.
No, and a kid could fall in it. I don't, I don't know if you want to put a limit on the height on that. I just think above-ground pools are, I think the ladder is enough. Except you might be right about a three-foot, but...
So the consensus is if it's an in-ground pool, at four feet or five feet?
No, we're talking in-ground? You're talking...
Well, let's clarify both while we're talking about pools. By the time we get done with this, summer will be over and we'll be doing ice skating rinks.
Yeah, I guess, Mr. Rob, I would say if, if it's an in-ground pool, it needs to have that five-foot fence around the, the outside of it with a, with a gate, right?
Well, leave that, leave that as it is.
Yes, in-ground, but if it was above-ground, I would say four foot is the minimum height of a sidewall.
Go along with that.
And if it's four feet above-ground with a deck around it, then you just have the railing on the deck like you would have on a...
Correct. A 36-inch code handrail around it. Yep.
Or something that blocks people from getting up the steps to the deck.
I mean, I, I mean, you've got people, you have the risk of someone falling in the pool and you have someone, you have the risk of someone falling off the deck. So since you have code for putting railings on a deck, it would seem crazy to have to put a fence around the pool and on top of the railing on the deck. But I think that's a reasonable approach.
Yeah, I forget what the height of the deck is, but I, I think if it's four foot and that deck's at that height, you have to have a handrail.
Yeah.
Yeah, I seen one up in Linwood where they had a small four-foot or five-foot deck. It's four by four, sitting right up against the pool, but they had a ladder on wheels that came away from that. So all it is, is just a structure sitting there and they pulled that away from it. And that means...
So when they weren't, weren't using it, they could get that away?
Pull that away. So they didn't, to me, I didn't think they need a gate. They don't need nothing. They pulled the access to that. It's just a small little deal.
Yeah.
Diving deck or something.
But something Ron brought up about that removable ladder, that, that definitely should have something in there that it's code that they can't leave that in overnight or whatever it is as a safety concern, right?
Well, I think we go back to, we were all at that meeting, you know? It's not our responsibility, I think, to cities. It's not our responsibility. They pull it out or they, I don't know if, Bill, can you write that into law? I mean, it's, I don't know.
Legislative common sense, is that what you're asking?
There you go.
You got it, Bill.
All right, so...
So now you know what you can talk about when you, when you go next week? That was, that concludes my report.
Thank you for bringing that up because I sat through that meeting and it just went on and on and on and...
Well, and I think, I mean, that's the whole purpose of having a liaison so you can kind of bring back with the sentiment of the councilists so that they don't do all the hard work and then have us go, mm, no.
Well, yeah, that, you're right. And I thought about that, that whole meeting, that here they are really, you know, working this thing over. And then if they were to come back and say that they want a fence, you know, and then we turn around and say, no. But that's the reason we got 10 people or nine now making the decision.
Yeah, and me personally, I didn't know if I should chime in or not, but just knowing it and have it burned in my head from having done it so many times, you know? It's just, I wanted to share that.
Anything else, Jen?
Nope, that's it.
All right. Attorney report.
Mr. Mayor and Council, I don't have a formal report. I just would let you know that I sent out the letter. I believe you were copied to the Rice Creek Watershed District. So unless there's further direction, we'll wait for their response and see what the next step is then.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Janet, back to your Sunrise JPO.
Oh, there was, can I ask a question? Did we have an engineer report? Oh, what report? An engineer report?
No engineers report.
There's no engineer.
Can I ask a question under that agenda item?
Sure.
I will address it to Elizabeth. So there was a memo that you and I got from Nick at the Rice Creek Watershed. It had to do with, or I shouldn't say a memo, email. It has to do with the ditch 102232 and what their plans are going forward. So what they basically said was that, you know, that they've decided that they're moving forward with this alternative four scenario. And they said that they intend to engage with the city along the way as they work on this and that they would be engaging with Kevin as the engineer on the effort, which I think is great, except there's a lot of policy and politics tied up in this topic. And I think it shouldn't just be Kevin. So I was wondering how you would feel if we responded, you, you or me or both of us, and said, Kevin's your point person for an engineering, but you also need to include, you know, either me as the liaison and/or Jessie as the, as the mayor on anything that's, you know, any written correspondence or any meetings. Because really, the tough part about this is the policy and whose responsibility is what. And, and I don't want to lay that on Kevin. Are you okay with that?
Yeah, I think that's fair.
Do you want, is it okay if I respond back to it and I'll copy you?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Okay, now for the perennial topic of the Sunrise WMO. So there's been a little bit of, of activity on this. The notice of dissolution was, I think, sent to all of us. So we, we, we passed a resolution to withdraw. Linwood passed a resolution to withdraw. It only takes two of us to do that for the JPA to fall apart. So then Jamie sent a, a notice of dissolution to Bowser and Anoka County and all of the members of the, of the JPA. On the twenty-sixth, East Bethel's board also passed a resolution to withdraw. So now there's three of the four of us that have made that intent known. It doesn't change the course going forward, but it's just another, another party that says that they're withdrawing. There was also a email that when, when Jamie sent out the dissolution, dissolution notice, then the Sunrise attorney contacted the Ham Lake attorney to make sure that they were aware of it. And he was, and he said that they'd had some discussion at a, at a, this is Ham Lake now. The, the Ham Lake City Council had, had some discussion at a workshop and that the council had directed the staff to take no further action because they want to see how the dissolution plays out. So I think there's nothing to report from that perspective. And, you know, I thought I'd give it a week or two and then I'll talk to Jamie about what we need to do next steps in terms of adopting the new terms of the JPA. And also, how do we deal with the uncertainty of whether Anoka County needs to be a party to the JPA on behalf of Ham Lake, or how, how do we move forward with that? So we're, we're, we're making progress, but we aren't there yet. So that's an update on that. And then you have a copy, some information in our handouts tonight from the Personnel Committee. I see, let's see. It is in the stapled, pardon?
There's, there's a stapled handout, which is just the, the outline.
Yep.
But on the back of the additions is the Personnel Committee report.
Okay, on the back of the resolution.
There it is.
This one right here. So this is, this is just a, an information only, you don't need to take any action. So you can just sit back and enjoy the, the story. But we had Personnel Committee met yesterday. Jesse stepped in, Mayor Pryner, sorry, stepped in on behalf of Councilmember Wagman who couldn't make the, the meeting. We had communicated that we were going to do a second interview with the summer intern candidate, and that's what we did. In the meantime, the Personnel Committee finalized the job description and a, on a list of projects. And also just a, an outline of what a summer intern program looks like. And Elizabeth did a really wonderful job of outlining this, something we can use going forward. You know, if we have intern opportunities in other, other ways. So you have that for your reading pleasure. The projects that we talked to the candidate about had to do with updating the petty cash policy in the accounting department, some working on an outline for a city council orientation handbook, which we don't have. And Ron, you were selected as the newest council member that he could interview and kind of get a perspective from. Working with the building department on some retention of records and return of house plans once we've, we don't need to keep them here anymore. And then having, write a few articles that are outlined here. So the question to him is, are these projects of interest to him? And the answer was yes. And does he feel capable of doing the projects? And the answer was yes. And therefore, he accepted our offer for the summer internship. He will start, his first day will be on July eleventh. And the end date's still kind of being figured out with transportation and everything. So it'll probably be a six-to-seven week internship. And we're excited. We're, I don't know if he's on the, his name is Grant Larson. And I told him that I would make sure I got his first name correct tonight, which I didn't get correct. I couldn't come up with it two weeks ago. I did, we're excited. I think it'll be a really good experience for everybody and he's on, welcome, welcome aboard.
Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers, I did receive an email from him. And so he had indicated to us that although he was grateful that we had the internship until August twenty-fifth, but his, his transportation is only available through the fifteenth. And so we'll, we'll then make it from July eleventh through August fifteenth. But we still think, you know, we can get all the projects done and, and he'll come before you at least one or two times. So we're excited to have him onboard.
Thank you.
That's all I have to say.
Public Works, Jim.
So real quick on this, I don't know if it's just a clerical thing, but if you look down in the, almost the last paragraph, it says one thousand nine hundred sixty. Do we just need to do a clerical?
It's not his hourly wage, I'm sorry, that was the, it was the total.
Oh, okay.
What we, what we had approved, yeah, what we approved was an amount of, I think it was eight thousand or something.
Okay, I thought maybe we had approved nineteen sixty an hour in my head.
I want to do that, I want that job. No, I just wanted you to know what the total hit was going to be. So far less than what we started out with and got approved, approval for.
No problem.
Yep.
All right. Okay, Mr. Mayor and City Council, I have a couple of things tonight. First, first thing is a discussion about...
What about the rest of the City Council?
Yep.
You guys want to do it?
Well, we were, we're still on number twelve.
He just said it, so I was going to go with it this time.
Oops. What'd they do?
Just checking to see if the rest of the council has a report.
Hold it, Jim, anybody else?
Nope.
No report.
I do. Talked with Councilman Husnick from Forest Lake. I brought this up early, I think it was last year, about Eureka, which is just north of what Hornsby turns into. They got some grant funding to have that road repaired. So they're going to be redoing that road here in the next probably year, year and a half.
Oh, yeah, you missed that. We had a...
Oh, that was last, okay, I apologize. So wanted to share that and he wanted to make sure I brought it up and asked me to. As well as curious where we're at with West Iverson Street and that, the cleanup of the house on West Iverson.
So...
Currently, I got called to have a little house visit from the neighbors. They're not happy, they're really displeased with us.
So, Rob, I know you got copied on the email. I responded to it. So if you read that, it's all there.
All right.
Yep.
I'm trying to think, at the last workshop, Joe Murphy was here. He is our criminal attorney and, and indicated to us that it is going through the criminal process. And in this particular case, the new court date, I believe, August third now.
I looked it up on the court calendar.
Okay, so just to share, both houses on both sides of them are looking to sell. And the Realtor told them, good luck, both of them, so.
Well, the really, the really good news is our, our code compliance inspector is going to be starting on July fifth. And so he will have to hit the ground running because we certainly have some things for him to work on.
Okay, I guess I just wanted to bring that forward for everyone. And sorry I didn't miss last meeting, so wasn't privy to that, that's my bad. And then also, I did text Jim, but residents were very happy about the speed limit signs going up. I got pictures and text messages, so that's all I got.
All right, Mr. Mayor and Council, I want to talk about Hornsby Street by Love's Travel Plaza and down. So it's, it's becoming apparent that there are a fair amount of trucks that are parking at Love's. And their overflow parking turns out to be on Hornsby Street. So as you drive by there in the morning, potentially there can be anywhere from two to, I've seen as many as eight. And I've heard that there's been as many as ten or twelve trucks parked along the side of the road on Hornsby Street. That would not be my preference. And I'm generally not a guy that asks for signs. I'm kind of, I kind of promote not to add signs, but I'd like to have a discussion tonight about posting Hornsby Street from ninety-seven or twenty-three Lake Drive all the way down to one forty-fifth, just so there are no trucks that park on that road, period. I think it's a, it, it's a potential safety problem. It's wear and tear on the shoulder of the road that's not built necessarily to the same spec as the driving lanes and they're off onto the gravel section. So I mean, it just, I, I personally don't prefer it. So I'm kind of looking to see what you guys think.
So can you clarify when, are you saying they're parking on the street because the parking lot is full?
Yeah.
There's that many?
I mean, that, that would be my assumption. So, I mean, I, I'm going to make an assumption to say that a truck pulls in there, there are no spots, so they pull out onto the road. That doesn't mean that a truck doesn't pull out of there at some point and there may or may not be an open spot.
Gotcha.
But, I mean, they're not moving to go back in there either. So, I, I mean, with that being said, my assumption is that the lot is full and that's why they're parking out there.
And the same thing happens on, at Holiday in the cul-de-sac. Because when Holiday is full, then they park in the cul-de-sac. And in that is, they, they literally park in the middle of the street. And, you know what I mean, because we have that short cul-de-sac coming out, and then, and then they end up parking there.
So I would, I would support that, what you want to do. Because, you know, a big part of our discussion with Love's is their security and their monitoring of those trucks that park there. And I got a feeling that if they're parking on the street, then they, that's probably not, you know, they're not paying attention to those. And so I, that's, that was part of their CUP. And I think, not that, maybe they don't even know or they're not aware of it, but I would agree that we don't want trucks parking there.
Okay.
Do you know what side of the voting?
You mean a motion?
On the east side or the west?
For the most part, they're on the east side.
The east side.
So they go in, I, again, assumption, they go in, look around for a spot, they don't see one, they pull out, park on the east side of the road. I have never seen one parked on the west side, but that doesn't mean that somebody hasn't. And I, and I guess with that being said, if somebody pulls over to organize a few things or do something like that, I'm totally fine with that. But I, I think the intent is to not park there for however long their layover is, you know, two hours, four hours. I, I don't know what the rules are, eight hours. So that, that's, shouldn't be the intent.
Didn't Love's tell us once that there was some call number or something that they would broadcast? Or if truckers are coming in?
They, they do have that now where they will tell truckers. Truckers have a, a, I don't know if it's a, a radio band or whatever. Basically, for all the truck stops in the areas that do provide, they can determine well in advance of them whether they're full or not. So they know, so they can adjust their, their travel schedule accordingly.
I know they got to sign up by Wyoming, that tells if the rest area has open spots.
All of these now subscribe to this and it's available.
So how many signs is it, do we have to buy?
I haven't totally decided how I was going to do it yet. I mean, we posted in some spots that say no, no parking between signs. And then you put one up at the beginning and you put one up at the end. I think we would potentially need a few more than that, though. I mean, because if you wheel in and you don't see it, you know what I mean? And plus, they're pulling out. So I, I'm going to say potentially six.
Well, go talk to the manager there and explain our concern. We don't want them parked on the road and see what they say about it. And then get some numbers on these signs. Is it a hundred bucks or ten thousand bucks or what is it?
Oh, I, I'm going to say that for six signs would probably be four hundred bucks.
So...
I, I mean, that's just a mere guess. I might even have signs, so.
Well, go talk to whoever it is. We had met her once.
Yeah, but I, I'm, I'm sure they're not going in there and saying, hey, is it okay if I park on the street? I'm sure they're just parking on the street.
Well, let's hear what they, put them on the spot.
Are they, are they ruining the side of the road over there, those trucks?
At the moment, not necessarily.
Not yet, but they will.
It's pretty dry out, but, I mean, if it was raining and the, you know, shoulders are soft, at some point, it's going to start to break away.
Okay.
Yeah, to your point, Jim, I actually had heard that they were going down to where that wreck trailer sales is and turning around there if they're seeing that's full and parking right there on the old, well, it's new road now, but would be what the old straight line performance was right there.
I, so I've not ever seen any down there, just, just along, you know, outside of Love's is the only place I've ever seen it. But I'm not always there either.
Where Stern Drive, yeah, where Stern Drywall is now, yep, so they're right there.
Well, check it all out and let us know. I'm not against...
So you want me to talk to them before you say I can put up signs?
Yeah, get some prices on the signs, talk to them, see what they have to say. And if they say they never saw a truck park there, you know they're not telling the truth. You've seen them there and...
But what's the point of talking to them? Are you expecting them to go out and tell them to move on or...
No, just see what they say.
But he's already seen them out there, so we don't...
Yeah, but it's a free country, you can park anywhere on any road. And they had pulled that, the City Council had pulled that at Trout Air forty years ago. We had no parking signs from the Holiday Station all the way down and all the way in. And it was a big waste of taxpayers' money. I mean, I'm not against it if it's an issue, I just don't want to, to do it without talking to anybody. See what they say. You're not going to put them up this weekend, it's the holiday. You're not going to put them up next weekend, it's the week after the holiday. Go talk to them and see what they say.
You could maybe talk to Chris or Brandon, one of the deputies, and ask them what it looks like at nighttime out there, if it's backed up.
Yeah, that's a good point, too.
You got a lot of trucks parked there. I mean, I haven't seen them, not that I'm over there that much, but I do see them sitting on the side of the entrance ramp, or the exit ramp, and the troopers usually get them off of there on the Broadway down. But I know they park on the rest area coming down that ramp, too, so. But you might want to ask Chris or somebody, take a look at it, what's it like at midnight or two o'clock? But I don't, I have no problem with signs.
Yeah, I'm in favor of the signs, but it doesn't hurt to get more information, too.
Good.
Thank you.
I'm going to assume that they're, that they probably don't really pay much attention to it, so maybe if we bring it to their attention.
Yeah, I mean, I think they have...
I don't know that they're going to go out there and tell them to move, but...
Well, they said they did, though. They patrolled hookers, the drug dealers and everybody else.
Well, they patrol, that's why I'm saying, they patrol their lots, but I don't think they probably think city streets are their jurisdiction to patrol. So they're, and that's why I think that's the biggest reason...
Well, if that's their answer, we'll slap the signs up six feet apart and I'll help you pound them in.
I don't want to put in that many.
If not, I mean...
Speaking of signs, what about the thirty mile an hour speed signs there?
Which ones?
The ones getting stolen.
It's just in my neighborhood.
There's only two to the best of my knowledge.
Oh, is there?
According to Shelley, that happened a fair amount last time in her recollection, too, which is what I've been told as well. So somebody down there don't like it.
Maybe we should just paint on the road thirty. Big white letters.
Probably could.
I don't know.
Okay.
Cell cam.
Next question is maybe a little more, a little more painful. I gave you two maps earlier. The first one will be the landscape map of St. Clair Lake. It has Outlet C on the top and then an orange line around some of the properties there. The first property where it says one fifty-seventh Avenue, the one straight, I'm going to say north of that, is concerned that there are some dead trees on our lot that if they fall, they're going to fall on her house. So Elizabeth and I had a small discussion and we don't really know whose responsibility is to remove trees or if, or, or what we can even do. So my question is to Bill, does he know what the rules are? And I did email you copies of it just a few minutes ago. Let me know if they're legible enough for you.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor and Council, you know, because this is a protected area, we'd want to look into the, to our ability to remove the trees. But on the other hand, the city now owns the lot, that was part of the settlement with the DNR. And so I think it is important, if there's any truth to the position, that those trees could fall on a house, that you remove them. Because the general understanding or insurance law is that once somebody's notified you of a hazard, if the, if the hazard does in fact happen, then the liability shifts to the, the other party. So why don't we do this? I, I should be able to have some time in the next couple of days to look at that question and maybe even contact the DNR. But I think it's really important that we be responsive... But I think it's really important that we be responsive as a city to that potentiality, if it in fact looks like it, like the tree could fall on their house.
How many trees are there involved, do you know?
I, I didn't look at it really hard, because I, I obviously had a few concerns at that point. There, there are a couple of dead trees next to this address. I think the address is 9148, or something of that sort. There's a couple of trees just to the side of their house there that are, you know, semi-broken up and starting to die, and, you know, not looking well. But if you follow the whole orange line down, I mean, all of those trees are, you know, two-arm reaches away from the back of everybody's house. So, so now, you know, where do I start? Where do I stop? What do we do? Is, is my, is my real question at that point. Do you go in and take out a couple, or, you know, I, I don't know what the rule is, so that's kind of what Elizabeth and I talked about. We just figured that this would be a discussion, and neither one of us really knew what the rules were at this point.
Well, I would say make it a full project, after the mosquitoes aren't so bad, and just start, well, see what Bill says. What do we have to do, and once we've been notified it's a hazard?
Because this is a, this is a no-touch zone. You know, this is the zone that we weren't supposed to touch, so I think in this particular case, we do have to, to, to talk to the DNR, because are we allowed to clear dead, dead trees, and do you need a permit to clear? Because this is where, this was the, I forget what they called it, WZ Zone, or whatever it was, whatever zone they called it. And it was not, it was not to be disturbed.
Like the butternut tree?
Yeah, exactly. And so, I realize these are, these are trees that are not, you know what I mean, that they're dying trees, but I think we have to, we have to figure out what, you know what I mean, whether they'll allow us to do that. And if they do, I agree, maybe you do it as a winter, a winter project, because it's, you know, it's, it's a wetland area back there.
Mr. Mayor and Council, just, I know that you can, even in a protected area, clear dead trees. The question would be, if we're going to start getting into the business of clearing dead trees, let's find out exactly what the rules are, establish a protocol. Maybe it's based upon owner inquiry, because that does shift the burden to the city for liability if the tree falls. I, I've got the settlement agreement, I can take a look at that. I can contact the DNR, but I think we should file some prudent steps in kind of responding to this. And I think we can tell the landowner that we are looking into it.
Yep, that sounds good.
Okay. So, my next question is the next map, and this is a question for anybody that's able to answer it. I have a little arrow pointing to a drainage pond, and when that property was ours, we were responsible for that drainage pond. Now that we sold it, are we still responsible for the drainage pond, or does that go to the owner? That's us.
It is us.
I wasn't sure how that one was wrote up, so.
Yep. So, that's an easement, that was an easement area bought by Anoka County. The easement is still in favor of Anoka County, and it still drains the roadway, so it would still be ours to maintain.
Okay.
And if you can see in the cul-de-sac, see, there's trailers parked in the cul-de-sac, even in this picture. To where it says Lake Drive Northeast.
Right.
Two trailers are parked in the cul-de-sac, and that's what they do. And, and don't get me wrong, I would rather a trucker pull off, and if they're really tired and be off the road than, than not. So, I, I get that part, too, because I'd rather them be safe. But again, they're parked, you know what I mean, in the, in the road.
Mr. Mayor and Council, just if I can add to Elizabeth's comment, since we're revisiting the trailers, I was thinking, when Jim brought that up, that we would treat both sides of the highway the same. In other words, mark both, no parking, so that, that we're not kind of singling out the Love side, and, and we would do the same on the adjacent to Holiday.
Yeah, what did we ever do with Holiday? Anything?
So, that cul-de-sac is marked no parking.
And did it stop?
Oh, it's, it is marked?
That one is marked.
Is it marked?
Yep.
And did it stop all the parking, then? Because for a while.
So, they were still parking next to the no parking sign, but then we called the sheriff's deputy, because it was hampering some maintenance that we were doing. Now, they've been patrolling it, so I haven't seen a vehicle parked there in quite some time, so they must be keeping an eye on it.
Because also, in reality, any of these trucks who don't have room to park at Love's or Holiday could swing into the track parking lot. You know, they've got gravel on one end, they could park all night long, it wouldn't hurt nothing. They've got 5,000 parking spaces, and they're not going to throw them out of there. So, if we do put up the signs, and they're not allowed to park where they shouldn't be, they still have an option right across the street.
But if they're not from here, they probably don't know that. But maybe that's something you can share with the manager. I mean, if it's okay with Ronnie Naces, you can share with the manager.
I was going to say, I don't think I'd want to offer that up unless we talk to Ronnie Naces.
Well, yeah, but, but I've seen, I mean, I've been over there a number of times lately, so there's, there are trucks that pull off there that have, you know, hauling cars and things like that, so I'm assuming that they're okay with it, but yeah, I would ask them first. But that might be a way to be kind of a relief valve for Love's if it isn't being busy. Except they can't be there when we do our movie in September.
Okay, that, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor and Council.
Thank you, Jim. Public Communications Coordinator report.
Just a quick update. Councilmember Haglund reminded me of a website offering from Paul Peterson over at LATV. So, I've reached out to him, and we're just sort of discussing what that looks like, what benefits that could be for the city, cost, that sort of thing. Just, we're initially starting that conversation on our end, so.
Where that goes. There it goes.
So, and the reason I'm, I'm being pushy about this is because we're trying to finalize the flyer, especially for the sponsorship, and we're kind of modeling it, modeling it after what Lino's done, which they list the website for the, for their Blue Heron Days, which I think is similar to what Paul was. So, it'd be really nice if we could list the website, so then that's where people can go to see, like, here's all the activities, and here's the time, and here's the food trucks that are going to be there, and all that kind of stuff. So, if you can make a.
Is there a difference between a website and just like, and having a webpage on our own website?
Yes. This is actually a standalone website, what I understand. It's, it's meant for this kind of thing, and it's super easy to navigate. So, unlike our website, where you probably have to go through four or five clicks to get to any information of detail about Fall Fest, this, that's all this is, is it would be about events. And then, you could keep it alive for any event, so if we, you know, if we end up having two or three of these a year, you could, you know, use it for, for, I think the hosting fee was like $175 a year. At least that's what he told us when we had our Fall Fest meeting.
195 right now.
Oh, it's went up. See, you should have jumped on it when it was 175. So, yes, thank you for doing that, and I think as soon as you know, let me know, so then we can include that in the flyer and start getting those. We have two people who are very anxious to go out and start door knocking.
Other than that, I have no report. Elizabeth, what do you have?
I have no report tonight.
What?
I got a question for you then, Elizabeth.
Okay.
July is creeping up to us here, what's the deal?
I know, how'd that happen?
What happens on the apartment building?
You know, I, funny you should ask, I did ask our attorney the same thing, because we're now almost getting within 30 days of the 90-day extension, and we were going to send out another email just to say, say, hello, have you, we've not heard anything. Except they did email back and say, this was a month, you know, a month ago, saying, we're still working on it. So, they haven't pulled the plug, so as far as we know, it's still moving forward.
Good, thank you. Then, we're quickly down to letter E. City Council Workshop Meeting, July 11th, and City Council Meeting at 5:30. City Council Meeting on July 12th at 6:00. By then, the month will be half over. Yikes. Planning Commission on the 19th at 6:00 p.m., and of course, all the, whole calendar is on page 28.
In looking at the July 3rd, I'm sorry, July 11th workshop, that will be a full workshop, and our attorney, associate, the city attorney, Megan Rogers, is going to host that workshop, and we're going to spend three hours, she's going to go over the policy process and procedure for the code enforcement program, and that she's drafting. So, that will be the unrolling of that. And I've been, I've told our community compliance inspector that we were doing it on that day, and so, expectation is he will also attend that meeting.
Very good. Anything else, anyone you'd like to add or subtract, or anything? All right. Would you like to make a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Chairman, I move to adjourn.
Rob, second.
It's moved and seconded, I'll call for the vote. Ron, aye.
Sue, aye. Janet, aye.
Rob, aye.
And Jesse, aye. Our meeting is adjourned at 7:01.